Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, December 16, 2019 at 7:07 PM. And tonight, before we begin our regular session of council, we do have a brief Finance Committee meeting. And Chairperson Jeff Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one item on the Finance and Personnel Committee that we have to take care of before the end of the year is Police Department personnel. We'll discuss this item because there's an ordinance coming forward tonight. Concerns the mayor would like to brief us on it?
Certainly. Council, you should have before you the ordinance itself, 147-19. This is for the records data entry operator. It's the Police Department, who's been working in that, kind of, holding down two roles as the administrative assistant, as well as the records data clerk, entry clerk, and been doing so since June 16th, no, June 24th of 2019. And so, in talking with the auditor, and also with the Chair for Finance and Personnel, Jeff Reisner, we felt that bringing this ordinance forward to compensate her to the tune of 58 cents per hour, and then this will also sunset once we do hire a records data entry operator for the Police Department. This amounts to about $1,000 to compensate Lori Wyson for what she's been doing. I don't know if the auditor wants to speak to that at all or not, but that is the ordinance.
Okay.
Any questions from members of the committee? Other members of council? Auditor, you wish to?
Well, I could. Just that she has been really doing, these are two full-time positions that she's been doing since June, and that's just not really easy. And the fact that the Police Chief is very happy with what she's doing. They have tried to hire someone else, and I'm sure they will again, so it's not a permanent change. So, I'm supportive of this.
Okay. Thank you.
This is retroactive, by the way. Council going back to the 24th of the year.
Comments? Well, that pretty much concludes Finance and Personnel.
The only question I have is that the ordinance itself, okay, does make mention, it does give that June 24th, but it says since February 2019. So, it's another date. Is that just describing previous duties prior to the June 24th? It does give the correct date of the records data entry position since June 24th.
Right.
The sentence immediately below it says...
Yeah.
She temporarily assumes some of the duties.
Correct, of the data entry.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. If no other questions, we're ready for all the rest of the council members and the Law Director. Our first item of business is establishing a quorum, and we do have all members of council present tonight. The second item is communications. And do any council members have any communications? If not, we'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason?
No.
Auditor Heck?
No.
Mayor Patterson?
I have nothing.
Okay. We'll move on, then, to ordinances for third reading. The first one being ordinance 130-19.
Needs to be amended.
Okay.
To substitute for this one that I've given you.
Okay. So, Clerk of Council has informed me that 130-19 will need to be amended, because we do have corrected copy of the budget, which Auditor Heck and the administration have been working on. So, 130-19 is an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2020, and is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we amend 130-19.
Second.
The amendment sheet has been passed around to all members of council. It's provided to us by the auditor. This provides some corrections and some figures that were not in the draft ordinance before. So, in order to have a budget, the numbers have to be correct. So, does the auditor care to speak to any of this?
Yeah, there were a lot of things missing, because there are so many, 20 spreadsheets that are combined into what council actually sees, and the links weren't all hooked up. So, there were things that were missing, and things that didn't have the right numbers. And so, Patty Whitmer went to work and corrected all of that. So, then, I went in and made changes that I needed to add, such as debt, and mostly the debt appropriations that need to be in there. We have OWDA loans that are scooped out January 1st, and so that money has to be in the budget when that happens. And we've got several other places that that needed to be added. So, hopefully, this will be okay, at least until next year.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion and second for amending ordinance 130-19. And is there any other comment, questions, or debate on this? Okay, all those in favor of amending 130-19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Councilmember Reisner.
I'd like to make a motion at this time to suspend the rules for 130-19.
Second.
Reason for suspension, of course, is that we had to have a budget in place before we begin the new year. This is our last meeting of the year, so we need to pass it tonight.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we now adopt 130-19.
Second. We have a motion and second for approving to the auditor and also to Patty, Patty Whitmer, for helping us work through this. And the mayor does have a comment?
Right. Just basically echoing what you just said, President Nisley. You know, I really want to give a big thank you to Patty Whitmer for going and digging through and worked tirelessly. Kathy Heck, Auditor Heck, thank you for all your work and support on this. And Director Stone was instrumental in getting this forward.
Good. Great. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 131-19 is an ordinance authorizing 2020 staffing levels and non-union compensation, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 131-19.
Second.
It's been read twice, discussed in committee. It's been approved by all the departments, so let's get it passed.
Okay. So, we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 131-19. Are there any comments or questions from council members, administration, or the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 133-19 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into contract with the Employee Benefits Service Center to serve as the city's third-party health insurance administrator, known as a TPA, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 133-19.
Second.
Again, like with the previous ordinance, we've read it, discussed it, we've debated it, looked at it, and it's time to pass it.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 133-19. And any other comments or questions from council members, administration, or the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 134-19 is an ordinance authorizing a stop-loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 134-19.
Second.
This, again, is how we do every year at this time, so it's time to pass it.
Okay.
We need insurance.
We have a motion and second for approval of 134-19. Any comments or questions from council members, or administration, or the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 135-19 is an ordinance amending ordinance 127-17, reallocating revenues from the city income tax, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 135-19.
Second.
As we discussed in committee and have read, this ordinance makes some minor adjustments to how certain percentages of the city income tax are relegated to different funds that the city needs. We do this every, about every year, I believe, making minor adjustments, tuning here and there where funds are needed or not needed for that particular year.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 135-19. Are there any questions or comments from council members, administration, or the audience? Member Mayor Patterson?
Once upon a time. What I'd like to say is it really isn't every year that this change takes place, but it has happened several times, just as a point of clarification, that every now and then we find that we can make some adjustments here and there.
You're correct. I misspoke on that.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Any other comments? We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 137-19 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 49, Management, Administration, and Control of the Use of Public Rights of Way, Chapter 49.03, Application Procedures, Section 49.03.02b, Certificate of Registration Application, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. This is more of a housekeeping change to Chapter 49. We've been taking our administrative fees and changing it over to be in Chapter 1. So, this is doing that.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 137-19. Any comments or questions from council, administration, or the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 138-19 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions to Include Fees for the Use of the City's Public Rights of Way, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. This is the second ordinance to officially make the change to Title 1, to where the fees go. Thank you. I move that we adopt.
I'll second if there was a motion.
Okay. We do have a motion and now have a second for approval of ordinance 138-19. Any comments or questions from council, administration, or the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 139-19 is an ordinance authorizing construction and construction engineering services for the Kyms Reservoir, Project Number 324, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 139-19.
Second.
Thank you. Quite simply, we have aging infrastructure that needs to be addressed. We heard from Public Works Director Bob Hedy about this. Fortunately, we will receive some financial support from the Community Development Block Grants for this particular project. Thank you.
So, we have a motion and second for approval of 139-19. Any comments or questions from council members, administration, or the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 140-19 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Titles 9 and 13 relating to firearms, and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 140-19.
Second.
Thank you. And this is the ordinance to adjust our local code regarding gun-related issues that have changed in state law, and it is adjusting some rules around curfew and discharge of firearm.
Okay.
As we have discussed.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 140-19. Any questions or comments from council, administration, or the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 141-19 is an ordinance authorizing disposal of an Athens Transit Bus no longer needed for a municipal purpose, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 141-19.
Second.
Thank you. This particular bus is beyond repair for its value. It has approximately 194,372 miles on it. It is a 2013 Ford Goshen Coach. This ordinance would authorize the City Service Safety Director to sell the said vehicle for scrap. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 141-19. Any comments or questions from council members, administration, or the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
142-19 is an ordinance declaring certain police department firearms no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. At this moment, I'd like to make a motion, a motion to adopt ordinance 142-19.
Second.
Thank you. We have heard from the city administration regarding this. Within the ordinance, it lists 75 firearms, one compound bow, dissemination kits, ammunition, 17 magazines for pistols. There was also a list, extensive list of these items, some of which were attained, and some of which belonged previously to the city. And this would authorize the City Service Safety Director to dispose of said firearms as trade-in to a federally licensed firearm dealer. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 142-19. Any comments or questions from council members, administration, or the audience? Yes, Councilmember McGee?
I had to get one in tonight. I just had a question, because a citizen asked me whether the socialists had prevailed in the issue of the arming of the officers. My understanding, the reason for this, and I just wanted to make it clear to the public is that the firearms are being, using a different kind of ammunition. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And it will actually save the city money in the long run?
That is correct.
Okay.
And another thing, as was mentioned when this came up at first reading, is that a lot of these are confiscated firearms that are being disposed of as well.
Okay. But as I say, I did want to make it clear to the public that this is just a matter to save money, rather than any other issue. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. All right. We have a motion and second for the approval, and I was asking if there were any other comments or questions. So, any others? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Ordinance 143-19 is an ordinance to increase sewer rates, amending Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, Section 5.04.08, Sewer Rates, and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by all members of council.
May I speak to the issue?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam President. The last time we read the ordinance, I had mentioned to council the possibility that there may be other scenarios of being able to raise the rates on some consumers, not so much on others, and somehow come up with the targeted figure that the city engineer believes that they need in order to do preventive maintenance, deferred maintenance, and also get new equipment. I received a communication here through the mayor from Andy Stone. They ran some numbers, tried to check, do as I requested, and according to this, this is approximately, there are approximately 4,500 residential customers. It's possible, according to the report generated, that about a third of them use 2,000 gallons or less a month. That would be 1,500 customers. The current base rate is $24.81. Then the next 1,000 gallons is $4.85, for a total of $29.66. An 8% increase, which is what the ordinance is discussing, would increase that to $32.03, or an extra $2.37 per month. A 5% increase would be $31.14, so a difference of 89 cents per month or less. The 5% was the figure that I had mentioned to council at our previous meeting. This pencils out, that's a good term, to about $16,000 less revenue a year. And he concludes by saying, "I do not believe the extended savings of an extra 89 cents per month is worth that much of a drop in revenue that the system needs to keep operational." So, I think based upon this report, I would definitely suggest that we pass the ordinance as is, unamended.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that additional information. So, at this point, we do have a motion and second for the approval of this ordinance to increase the sewer rates. Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Fall?
I am concerned about just popping this out on people in January. It'd be nice if they could phase it in over two months or something. I'm also, I'm of a firm believer in being able to charge people less for less resources that they use. So, I would really like the city in looking for future raises in fees and such, to really look at that. Because we should be not only doing the saving resources on our own part, but we should be rewarding citizens who do the same thing. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I would just like to echo a portion of what Member Fall said, that I would hope that, as a city, we could continue to look at the option of an ultra-low category for billing, or this, some options to compensate those, or adjust for those who may be just a single individual in a home, or people who really are focusing on water conservation, rather than being billed at the same rate.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. We have the motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have two ordinances for second reading, the first of these being 132-19. It's an ordinance adopting a fringe benefits package for non-union personnel within the City of Athens, and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules for 132-19.
Second.
The suspension, obviously, is because we need to get this package adopted before the end of the year, and this is our last meeting.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 132-19.
Second.
The same reason I just gave to suspend, so.
Okay. So, we have a motion and second for approval of 132-19. Are there any comments or questions from council members, or administration, or the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Okay.
Calm down.
Ordinance 144-19 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to submit an application and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement for planning, design, and/or construction, designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules for 144-19.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that there is a deadline for the, to apply, there's an application deadline, and it has to be done before the end of the year, I believe. So, that's the reason why we have to suspend if this is, if this City Service Safety Director is able to get this loan successfully.
Okay. So, we have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 144-19.
Second.
Even though we've just discussed it once in previous, I believe this is something that the city really needs to get. I think we could do a world of good with this type of money available for our infrastructure, and I really think we should support the administration and personnel.
Okay. So, we have a motion and second for approval of 144-19. Are there any comments or questions from council members, administration, or the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for first reading. 145-19 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to pay a current employee promoted to the position of Deputy Service Safety Director at a rate not to exceed the midpoint of the new pay grade, in accordance with ordinance 143-18, the Non-Union Personnel Fringe Benefits Package, Section 20, Promotion, and Declaring an Emergency. And this is?
Finance.
Likely Finance and Personnel. That's all you?
It's not explicitly stated, but we'll just make that assumption. Well, I'd move that we suspend the rules for 145-19.
Second.
The reason is, if we want to get this person into this position and start paying them as their, as this ordinance specifies, we'll have to pass it tonight.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 145-19.
Second.
The administration care to speak to our proposed new Deputy Service Safety Director?
I will. You know, I think that the person that we have made an offer to will be an outstanding Deputy Service Safety Director for the City of Athens. And again, it was conditional. And again, it was conditional upon this request to have this level of increase, and that would be Andrew Chicky, who is currently working at Arts Parks and Recreation, and will be moving up probably sometime in January if this passes successfully tonight. So again, we, I believe we've made a good choice in identifying Andrew as the person to fulfill that role, which is a very important role, as council, I believe the viewing audience knows.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 145-19. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 146-19 is an ordinance authorizing a pay increase for an employee in the police department and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend the rules for 146-19.
Second.
Again, the reason is just timing. We're at the end of the year. We need to get this person's pay increased according to the job that they've been doing, as we discussed a few moments ago in the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting at the beginning of the session.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
I move that we adopt 146-19.
Second.
And as the mayor had stated the reasons why this needs to be done, this person's been working essentially two jobs in the police department. The auditor has talked about it and stated that had no objection, so I believe we should pass this ordinance tonight.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 146-19. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance has been approved. And we now have several one-reading resolutions for two well-loved and respected council members who are leaving council. And the first resolution is for Councilmember Kent Butler, and will be read by Mr. Jeff Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. It is indeed a pleasure and honor to be here to read this resolution to my good friend and colleague, Kent Butler. I've known Mr. Butler for quite a while here in Athens. We've managed to run into one another somehow. So allow me to read this resolution. R-10-19, A Resolution Expressing the Appreciation of the City of Athens, Ohio to Councilmember Kent Butler for His Public Service. Whereas Kent Butler has served the city of Athens as First Ward Councilmember for 12 years from January 2008 through December 2019, and whereas Kent Butler has been astute and analytic listener in his approach to all matters addressed by city council, and whereas Kent Butler always adds a welcoming and inclusive atmosphere to meetings, and whereas Kent Butler, serving as Chair of the City and Safety Service Committee, has been a champion for the police and fire departments, and whereas Kent's institutional knowledge has been helpful to other council members, and whereas Kent Butler has generously given his time as a public servant, and this council wishes him well in his future endeavors, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio. Section 1, The City of Athens Does hereby express its appreciation to Kent Butler for his faithful and distinguished service to the city as its First Ward Member of Athens City Council. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
To the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I wouldn't even dare to ask if there are any opposed to that one. And we do have something to remember, this building that you've been trooping in and out of.
Thank you.
For all these years.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Patterson.
If I may, Madam President, you know, Kent, one of the things I wanted to share with you is when I first became a council member back in 2012 and worked under your committee, which was one of several, but Service, City and Safety Services, I learned a lot from you. I want you to know that. And the other thing that I've really appreciated about Councilmember Butler is even when things got heated, which didn't happen very often, you know, the one person that we could always rely on to maintain decorum and self-control was you. And for that, I appreciate everything that you've done in all your years of service for the city of Athens.
Thank you, sir. All right. We now have a resolution for Councilmember McGee. And this will be read by Chris Fall.
Well, I will start out by making a motion to pass R-11-19.
Second.
Thank you. Let me first say that it's been an honor and a pleasure working with you. It's been nice. We're neighbors, and this is a whole new way of knowing each other. It's been great. So. A resolution expressing the appreciation of the City of Athens, Ohio, to Councilmember Patrick McGee for his public service. Whereas Patrick McGee has served the Athens community as an at-large member of council for four years, from January 2016 through December 2019, and whereas Patrick McGee, by his question, many questions led to a fuller discussion and additional queries on legislative matters. And whereas Patrick McGee displayed watchful oversight of taxpayer dollars and other legislative expenditures, and whereas Patrick McGee has served as an advocate for Ohio University's students, ensuring their views were represented, and whereas Patrick McGee's sense of humor will be missed during very lengthy city council meetings, and swill as his snazzy hats. And whereas Patrick McGee has generously given his time as a public servant, and the council wishes him well in his future endeavors, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio. Section 1, The City of Athens Does hereby express its appreciation to Patrick McGee for his faithful and distinguished service to the city as an at-large member of Athens City Council. Thank you, Patrick.
Well, thank you.
All right. So just to make it official, we do have the motion and second for approval of this resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. So the motion carries and.
Thank you. This is wonderful. Thank you.
All right. We have announcements and other business.
Wait a second.
Mayor Patterson.
I can't.
Excuse me. You can't let that one go. You shouldn't.
Councilmember McGee, I have always enjoyed communications with you, debate with you, however you want to frame it, here, but also in our engagements on the street. You know, you're a delight to talk with. Your wisdom is fantastic. I too have learned, as much as I learned from Kent, I've learned from you. I love the way you think, and I really appreciate your four years on city council. I really do.
Thank you.
Yes, and one. And one last thing.
Councilmember McGee has been working with my work-study student, Adam, to help him get ready for entering law school. And Adam couldn't be here tonight, so he just really wanted me to say thank you.
That's grand. Thank you. Okay.
President Nisley.
Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. I wanted to share with Councilmember McGee, as well as the rest of my colleagues, I appreciate you challenging us to be critical thinkers. That's important. Sometimes we get accused of just saying yay and not challenging each other on votes, but the banter, the questioning, the curiosity, it's been appreciated, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Announcements. I do have one, before I forget. The next council meeting will be on January 6, 2020. So we'll be off for a few weeks. Okay. Yes, Mayor Patterson.
I shared this with council during your orientation, but I think it's prudent to say this again here, so the viewing audience knows, that we had the Ohio Public Works Commission meeting last week, OPWC, and we have one project that was very highly rated. As a matter of fact, it was the second on a list of over 40 different projects throughout District 18, and that project being the Stimson Avenue Project, to which we will be awarded $400,000 for that particular improvement in the city. So again, I want council to know that we did well.
That's great. Great to know, and also thanks to the administration and all the staff who helped prepare the grant application. Those aren't easy. We do have a motion to accept the auditor's November 2000, or if we could have a motion to accept the auditor's November 2019 financial reports. So moved?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They've been, auditor's reports have been accepted. Thank you. And we now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Is there anyone wanting to speak from the audience? Okay. All right. If not.
We do have a nice crowd here this evening.
We do. Some returned, some new people, and it's wonderful to see you all. And if no other business or announcements, then a motion to adjourn.
Can I make a motion, please, to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Ah, there you go.
Vote with your feet.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned at 7:48 PM. Thank you very much.